Like to call the meeting order, Mrs. Burns, roll call.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Lafferty? Mrs. Marshall? Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Sporney is absent with prior notice. Mrs. Walpeiser? We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board met in executive session before tonight's meeting to discuss matters related to confidential labor, employment, and student-related matters. Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman, Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. First, congratulations to the hundreds of student artists who had their work chosen for display at the District Art Show last week. Every year, I'm always impressed by the level of creativity and skill represented by the hundreds of paintings, drawings, sculptures, pottery, photographs, and digital artwork at this show. This year was no exception, and I thank the Art Show Committee and all of the art teachers for their efforts putting this show together. Also, last week, nine members of our Nishamani High School Science Club competed at the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science State Competition held at Penn State University. All nine earned a spot in the state competition after winning at the regional level with their science projects that they have been preparing all school year. I'm proud to report that all nine also cleared up at cleaned up at the state competition, including first-place winners Jack Kenny, Vic Chen, Carson Tren, Adriana Acevedo, and Jake Lor. Second-place winners were Samuel Hunter, Nishka Patel, Carly Fitzwater, and third-place winner Barb Irishmealy. Congratulations to them on this stellar accomplishment. We offer our best wishes to the seven Nishamani High School seniors who were honored at the Military Commitment Ceremony this past Thursday. Each year, we're proud to honor our students who choose to serve our country at this ceremony, which includes their families, recruitment officers, and special guests. Thanks to Mara Rita Chomakova, Kaden Marciano, Ryan Sullivan, who will all be joining the U.S. Air Force, Edward Walsh, joining the U.S. Navy, Aiden Russell, Charlotte Anderson, joining the Army National Guard, and Natalie Woodman, who will be attending the Merchant Marine Academy for their future service. We also had the opportunity to honor eighteen of our Nishamani High School senior athletes who signed their letters of intent to continue playing their sports at the college level at a ceremony last week. We congratulate them and look forward to seeing what they can accomplish at the next level. And finally, congratulations to the Nishamani High School cast of Young Frankenstein, who not only performed some of their show at the Philadelphia Independence Awards for high school musicals last week, but also received two awards. The show's leads for the Best Dance Ensemble and Rebecca Gutierrez for Best Female Vocalist. Rebecca was also nominated as a Jimmy Award Actress, which means she will be attending the National Jimmy Awards for High School Music Theater in New York City on June twenty-third. Only two nominees from the Philadelphia region are nominated each year, so this is a major honor for her and a very proud moment for Nishamani. That's all I have, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. That brings us to the first public comment. Period?
I'd just like to make a couple announcements. In reviewing the sign-up sheet for public comment, there's ten people that have signed up for non-agenda items, so per board policy, we can take those people during the first round of public comment. So I think I all know, we all know why you're here. I've advised this board numerous times that we don't comment in public on personnel, litigation, or student-related matters. So they're not being evasive. They're taking my advice. Okay?
Valerie Graves?
They're all, everyone has signed up, everyone has signed up for a non-agenda item, so, so the first name.
Just state your name, where you live, and I'll, yeah, and I'll, I'll, three minutes, I'll hit the timer on my phone.
Promise, I'll try to stick to that.
Give or take three minutes.
My name is Valerie Graves. I am a Levittown resident. I have two children that currently are in Carl Sandberg Middle School. Good evening to this wonderful board here. I wanted to let you know that I attended last week's Business Operations Meeting because I was told that this is the committee responsible for deciding the annual budget. Knowing a teacher's position was being eliminated, I came hoping to understand the decision and explore alternate solutions. Unfortunately, from the moment I spoke, I was met with closed-off body language and dismissive attitudes. It was clear some board members had made assumptions about me without ever meeting me. Despite that, I remained respectful and focused on asking thoughtful, solution-oriented questions. When I asked why a retired music teacher's position wouldn't be refilled, I received three different answers. The Tart Department drew the short stick. It was due to class sizes and also because of redistricting. Which is it? We deserve clarity, not contradictions. When we asked how this decision would impact next year's classrooms, we were told, "Teachers will figure it out." I asked who made this decision and was told it came from professionals, none of whom have music educational backgrounds and none who consulted with the very teachers that this would affect. I shared that over twenty-six hundred parents and community members have signed a petition to save this position. When I asked whether their voices matter, board member Tina Hollenbeck and Marty Sullivan said, and I quote, "Nope, we don't care what the community thinks." You did. Tina herself has said she once sat in our place pleading with the board to listen. When I asked if it worked, she said no, and that's why she ran for the board. But now, she's repeating the very behavior she once fought against. After nine years on the board, pre-COVID, during, and after, our district is facing a $2 million deficit under her leadership. At the meeting, she not only dismissed community concerns, but dominated the conversation to the point that our fellow board members could barely speak. I urge this board to reevaluate who is leading the budgeting process. Leadership matters, and where there's a deficit this large and the public trust this low, change is necessary. The board also stated that fifteen more teachers are scheduled to retire next year, and we should expect more cuts. We're not just fighting for this one position today. We're fighting to protect our schools from future erosion tomorrow and more teachers. The board was frustrated that our concerns delayed their vote, but imagine how frustrated our teachers will be next year when they're asked to do more with less. We are simply asking you to do what is asked of them. Listen, care, and act with compassion. Thank you.
Jerry Kraus? Jerry Kraus?
Okay, my name is Jerry Kraus. I am in Langhorne. I have a daughter at Maple Point, a son at Nishamani High School, and a recent graduate from last year. I'm an electrical engineer, a Nishamani substitute teacher, and a world-renowned set shot boy. Good evening, members of the board, administration, and community. I stand before you today, not just as a passionate advocate for the arts, but as someone speaking for hundreds of students, parents, and educators who know the power of music education. I'm here to ask a simple question, but a critical one. With all that our music department has accomplished, why are we considering not maintaining its staffing? Look at the record. I want to keep this not emotional and very statistic-based. Across the last year, Nishamani has excelled at county, district, and state-level festivals. Our students have sung national anthems at professional sports games and brought home multiple soloist awards from festivals. We've seen Sandberg's Choir receive a superior rating at adjudication, and the Sandberg Sound Waves performed with the Trans-Siberian Orchestra at the Wells Fargo Center after winning B-101's Philly Christmas Choir Competition. They also have seven BCMEA participants. At Pequesting, Ensembles swept the Music Showcase Festival with six first-place awards, multiple superior ratings, and even took home Best Section honors. They also have twenty BCMEA participants. Maple Point students not only achieved individual excellence with top chair placements, but built lasting community across buildings through shared performances. They also united the three Nishamani Middle Schools and one school from Central Bucks School District through a student-led a cappella initiative. They also have eight BCMEA students. At the high school level, we're not just talking about talent. We're talking about national recognition. As the superintendent has just mentioned, we've sent students to perform on Broadway at the Jimmy Awards, won last year, won this year. Last year, the gentleman who went actually won an award at the Jimmys. We've also won several independent Philly Independence Awards. These are elite competitive honors, and they reflect the exceptional caliber of our students and our teachers. And here's the kicker. This program doesn't just produce awards. It produces confidence, community, character, and leadership. Our music students become honor students, peer mentors, and proud ambassadors of the Nishamani Excellence. So again, I ask, why would we consider not maintaining something that so clearly works? The district has a football program that's won less than half its games over the last few years and hasn't come close to cracking the top one hundred programs in the state, and they just received a multimillion-dollar stadium upgrade and are currently undergoing the construction of a brand-new fieldhouse. Our auditoriums, stages, lighting, and sound systems throughout the district are old, outdated, deteriorating, and in some cases, becoming unsafe with wood splintering beneath our performers' feet and potential mold growth under the stages. You've known this for years, and still you do nothing. While upgrading all these items would be amazing, that's not what I'm here to ask about today. I'm asking you to hire one more music teacher to replace the one retiring. I'm asking you to maintain this program's amazing pedigree without overworking and burning out the existing staff. Considering an enrollment of almost ten thousand students, I don't think keeping a tenth teacher is asking very much. Our music program and its staff are not a cost. They are an investment, and with nearly $947,000 budget reserve this upcoming year, surely we can afford to preserve that staff running the programs that are actually putting the Nishamani on the map. To reduce staffing now would not only be shortsighted, it would be a disservice to every student who dreams, sings, plays, and grows through music. Don't break down what's working. Support it and maintain it. Thank you.
Jennifer Hunter? Jennifer Hunter?
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jennifer Hunter, and I must say, that is a hard act to follow, so that was very good and informative speech. I live in Lower Southampton Township in Feasterville, and first, I would like to thank all of you, board members, for your service to the community and your commitment to ensuring that a quality education for every Nishamani student in the district. I am here on behalf of three high school juniors who were unable to be here tonight because they are at the High School Instrumental Music Banquet, celebrating another successful year, as you've heard from my predecessor, with the Nishamani Music Program, which has been recognized for its excellence for the ninth consecutive year, and whose program, thanks to its supportive and committed teachers, has produced talented musicians that have been representing Nishamani at county, regional, state, and national levels. I'm here, even though my children will be seniors next year, because I wanted to make sure that you realize just how valuable this program is and how grateful that I am that my children found their niche in it. This would not have been possible without the strong musical foundations that were built for my children, starting with Mr. Barber as a kindergartner, Mrs. Kirsch at Tuwanka as beginning string students, Mrs. Lewis as their string teacher at Pequesting, who was instrumental in keeping the spring, the string program intact during and after the pandemic, and Mr. Lipton and then Mr. O'Neill at the high school. These music teachers and others, who I've not named because of time constraints, have consistently been there for the students and their families and have continually shown up at numerous events in moments that they didn't need to. I was sad to hear of Mr. Barber's retirement, knowing that it would be a great loss to the music program, given his role not only at Tuwanka as a full-time music teacher, but also his support at the middle school and high school levels. He will be greatly missed, and it cannot be stressed enough that what he did for this district cannot be absorbed by the existing staff at Nishamani. Limiting the resources of a thriving music program, which has given countless students the support they need at an impressionable time in their lives, will be devastating, not only to the program, but also to the students and their families. I urge that you support the music teachers and the program and not eliminate a music teacher position so that we can do what is in the students' best interest, because isn't this why all of these people are here and why all the people have been speaking up, signing petitions, showing up, and why you chose to serve on this very board? We all want the best for every student. Thank you for your time.
Janelle Garcia?
I got the button on the first try. My name's Janelle Garcia. I'm a Levittown resident, member of the Sandberg Music Boosters, and proud parent of my daughter in Sandberg Middle School, who's sitting behind me and really embarrassed, and son at Albert Schweitzer. I want to start by thanking all of you for taking the time to listen to members of the community with parents, teachers, and students present here today. I'm here to share a personal account of music's impact on my family with supporting statistics provided by a Nishamani music teacher who couldn't be here today. At a time when we know more than ever about the value of music education, it is deeply concerning that we would consider cutting a music teacher position from our schools. Research consistently shows that music not only is beneficial for brain development, it supports the growth of the whole person. Music teaches critical life skills, teamwork, perseverance, empathy, and a sense of commitment to something greater than ourselves. We saw that commitment firsthand here tonight. High school students gave up part of their own banquet to perform outside these doors in support of music education. Elementary and middle school students from all over the district showed up and performed together, standing today because they know how vital music is to their development. Music making improves memory, strengthens neural connections across the brain, and boosts academic performance across all subjects, especially in literacy and math. In fact, students involved in music programs consistently score higher on standardized tests regardless of their background. Beyond academics, music enhances our physical and emotional well-being. It builds stronger immune systems and even accelerates healing. Music is the only discipline that activates the entire brain. It has been such an integral part of my daughter's growth as a young woman at Sandberg, as a developing singer and human being. She is one of the many here to support this program today. For these reasons, this should be the last program with a position considered for elimination, not the first. As the saying goes, "When words fail, music speaks." Please let music continue to speak for our students, and we strongly urge you to reconsider your position. Thank you.
Rebecca Johnson?
Hi, Rebecca Johnson. I live in Langhorne. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Rebecca Johnson, and I'm a proud 2012 graduate of the Nishamani School District. I'm also the school counselor at Core Creek Elementary School. I'm here tonight because I care deeply about the future of music education in our district, and I am urging you not to eliminate an elementary music teaching position following the recent retirement. As a student, my music journey at Nishamani started in kindergarten in Mr. Valentino's music class. Yes, I still remember his name twenty-five years later. By fourth grade, I joined chorus as well as band with Mr. Russell, who still teaches music in Nishamani Elementary Schools today. I went on to participate in the music program at Nishamani every single year until I graduated. The music program was more than just an extracurricular for me. It was my home. The music program was, it provided a supportive community that helped me thrive both academically and personally. Through my early start in music, I learned discipline, teamwork, time management, and self-confidence. These are skills that I continue to use every single day in my adult life. Nishamani has been honored as one of the best communities of music education for nine years in a row. That's something we should all be incredibly proud of, and it's a standard that we must live up to. Cutting a teacher, especially at the elementary level, where foundational music skills are formed, undermines that honor. It sends a message to our community and to our students that music is optional, or worse, expendable. I understand that the district is facing budget pressures, but I also know that not replacing this teacher may not bring the financial savings that some may think. Here's why. Reducing staff won't eliminate the demand. It just redistributes the workload. That means larger class sizes, reduced individual attention, and overburdened remaining staff. When quality suffers, enrollment drops in music programs, and those losses can ripple into other areas: academic performance, student engagement, and even community support. Music education has well-documented academic and behavioral benefits. Research shows that students involved in music are more likely to score higher on standardized assessments, have better attendance, and exhibit fewer behavioral issues. A 2019 study from the Journal of Educational Psychology found that students who participated in music had significantly higher math, science, and English scores than peers who did not. The National Association for Music also reports that schools with strong music programs tend to have lower suspension rates and higher graduation rates. These are not just feel-good statistics. They reflect measurable outcomes that impact the entire school system. Elementary music is the beginning of a musical journey for students, and it's where they learn to express themselves, to connect with others, and to feel a sense of belonging in school. By removing a key part of that early experience, we risk losing those benefits before they can even take root. I'm asking you not just to consider this decision as a budget line, but as an investment in our children's development, our district's legacy, and our community's values. Nishamani should be a leader in elementary or in music education, not a district that falls behind others in Bucks County who continue to prioritize the arts. Please do not take away the opportunities that meant so much to me and so many others by eliminating a music position at Nishamani. The next generation of students deserves to have the same chance to find their voices and confidence through music. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to doing what's best for our students.
Karen Matham-Maylock?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to have time here tonight. I come at this from a very different perspective. I no longer have kids in the Nishamani schools, but I did. I was a kid in the Nishamani schools with Ted Kluse. He was my choir director. I started in Nishamani singing in choruses, and it gave me a place to thrive. I realize that I'm not going to spout statistics or, you know, count pennies with you tonight, but there are things that are intangible that are far more important than any amount of pennies. I also taught elementary school for thirty-six years, and during those thirty-six years, I saw kids who were kind of odd ducks and kind of had nowhere else to be, but by gum, they found it in music. They found a supportive family. They found people who cared about them. They found a place to fly, and as sure as athletes fly on their fields and enjoy their extra or co-curricular activities, our music kids have got to be given the same opportunity. Both of my sons came through Nishamani. They played saxophone, viola, cello, and the friends that they made during those years are their friends to this day. And now I'm going to tell you about how old I am, because in about two weeks, friends that I sang with in the choir fifty-three years ago and I are getting together because we found a community where we loved one another, we supported one another, and we cared about each other over the decades. And again, I know it may not be your job to care about this sort of thing, but sometimes the intangibles are the most important thing for children. Do not take away a chance for little elementary kids that I watched for thirty-six years to get started on a music journey that will provide joy for them the rest of their lives. I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your listening.
Ashley, Ashley Fauch?
All right. Hi, I'm Ashley. I live in Pendell. Thanks for being here. I do not have a fabulous speech planned because I'm flying by the seat of my pants, but this is important. I went to Nishamani. My dad went to Nishamani. My son goes to Nishamani, and my younger son will obviously come here when he's old enough. I don't have statistics, and I'm going to get upset. I hope you all listen because I wouldn't be the person I am today if I didn't have music. We talked about Mr. Valentino, Mr. Nelson, Ms. T., who's Ms. Hanagoga, who I never remember her name. All these people, Mr. Barber, I had all them. I'm old. I just turned forty. But they made a difference. I remember a talent show at Herbert Hoover. We watched it last year, and like, these things just make a difference in, in kids, and my son has had a lot of loss in his life, and he's only going to be eleven. And this year, so he's in fifth grade, he turned up for the play, and he loved it. He does orchestra, and he does the choir, but music does so much for children. And he needs it, and there's other people who also have floss, and it's important for children. I don't have all the statistics on everything, even though everything is totally true. It's just important. I'm a nurse, and music's important in doing my role, and I'm not, I'm going to stop because I'm just going to be rambling. But please don't cut a position and make it less for our children because everybody needs it, and whether you don't believe it full-heartedly, and there's other ways to like make cuts or have a, have a different meeting with like people with like ideas and get down to it, not just make the decision by yourself, even though you're educated and you took this board, you took this, you know, as a, as a board member, you know, there's other ways around it, but please don't cut the music department. And I, I don't know, you know, how much money it would really save, but it really doesn't even matter. It's about the children and how, how well they're going to strive in life because they definitely need it. So, thank you.
Erin Schumacher?
Hi, my name is Erin Schumacher. I live in Levittown. So I'm up here to make comment and speak, same as all the other people in this room, to strongly urge the board to hire a teacher into the music position rather than cut the position through attrition. Nishamani has outstanding music teachers, and these teachers are the backbone for this music education. Recently, Nishamani was voted one of the best communities for music education for the ninth year in a row. ninth year in a row. The Nishamani School Board's decision to eliminate a music teacher position through attrition contradicts this demonstrating of commitment to and access to the music education. My daughter is in this music education. She started in elementary school, plays in the orchestra, sings in choir, has participated in the musical all the way up through now in the Shamy High School. I asked her to give me some words on what the music program means to her. She said that the Nishamani music program has aided her growth as a musician by providing her countless opportunities to show her talent and improve. Her teachers have taught her the skills that have really helped her in this improvement. The music program has also helped her form strong friendships with other musicians, and she's extremely grateful for that. I want to close out with that all of the music teachers are needed to continue these type of experiences and positive impacts on students. Not replacing the position of the teacher who has retired would be a detriment to the program and take valuable time away from the students, as the remaining teachers would be required to do more with less, which never actually works. Thank you.
Tony Harvey, Trivost Feasterville, 46-year resident. You all know that. What I didn't say the last time I was here is that I myself am a third-generation Nishamani alumni. My mother was a 62 chieftain. Uh, my grandmother, I don't know what she would have been prior to that. My children are fourth generation. My, uh, great nephews who are currently in the district and want also in the music program is fifth generation. So, we helped build this community. I'm tired. I probably shouldn't even be here tonight, um, but my son made me come, and you can stand up, Sunny. He made me come. He's having surgery tomorrow morning, and we need to leave at 5:00 AM to be at Shriners by 6:00 AM, but here we are, trying to help save this music program. I didn't write anything down. Um, I just wanted to say, when my daughter started middle school, she addressed the board. And Tina, you're looking at me because you were there. And she addressed the board for childhood cancer awareness. And one of the words out of your mouth was that you were so excited that kids came to voice their opinions and spoke at board meetings. Well, my two children, as well as another young man, spoke two weeks ago when they were here. It clearly didn't change anyone's mind. These kids stood out here for the past hour, hour and a half playing their instruments. They're here, they're voicing their opinions. They want to save this program. I want to help save the program for them. I would like to know how you're going to do it? Who are you gonna cut? You know, is it gonna be a director from Pequesting, or Maple Point, or Sandberg? Are you gonna cut a director from one of the elementary schools? It would be nice to know who that's gonna be, so that, especially when we return in the fall, we're not returning to, you know, a big shock, one of their, uh, directors is gone. You know, my kids are gonna continue in the music program. I, I just wanted to stay, that's all.
Before, before we close, close the first public comment period, is there anyone who didn't sign up who would like to approach the podium? Push the button on the left-hand side. On the bottom.
Okay, got it. Um, hi, I'm Gianna Garcia, a proud student at Carl Sandberg Middle School, and I'm not here to voice what needs to be changed in our district, because what do I know about that? I'm here to voice my personal experience as part of the Sandberg music program and what kind of change music has had on my life, as well as the effect that removing even one staff member can have on our entire community. Music has given me and so many others a place where we can truly fit in. Just being in the environment of a band room, a choir room, or the auditorium, wait, I lost where it was. You can see that every single student is involved, is smiling. Middle school is not an easy place just to be, but our music program has given me a home where I have been able to become confident and make some of the very best friends I could ever ask for. Mr. T., our choir director, from the very first day that he walked through those doors, has not only been a teacher, but a mentor and a friend. He's worked so hard to make our amazing music program what it is, along with so many of our other hard-working staff. Like Ms. Douglas, our musical theater director, Ms. Rye, our assistant choir director, Mrs. Hurd, our orchestra director, Mrs. Franks for band, and our entire Sandberg community. And I know for a fact that Maple Point and Pequesting feel the same. My little brother is in elementary school, and my hope is that he will be able to experience the incredible Sandberg music program the same way I have, and making any change to our faculty, family would take that away.
That will close the first pub- somebody else? It won't close the public comment period.
Hello, uh, my name's Heidi Henkens. I live in Feasterville. Uh, so I've been able to attend the meetings, uh, the last board meeting on the 13th, and then last Wednesday, uh, with the smaller committee. And, well, I appreciate that, uh, especially at that last committee meeting, that there was a lot of back and forth and a better understanding of how this came to be. I have grave concern over what this actually looks like. No answer, no sufficient answer was given. If the teacher is not known who will be moving, then how are we to know this is going to work? How are we going to know what this will look like? We cannot support this decision until we can get those answers. These teachers need to know. We were told scheduling wouldn't happen until later anyway. However, saying we're confident it's going to work, we are not confident it's going to work. Show us how it's going to work. Show us what the schedule is going to look like. Somebody said to a teacher that voiced their direct concern, because who am I? I'm a parent, of course I have my concerns, my world is this big. This was coming directly from one of the music itinerant teachers, asking, what is it going to look like? And that teacher was told or asked, wouldn't you love having tiny-ass students? Doesn't it sound good to have a smaller student mode? But those students are not going to disappear. They're going to be absorbed by the remaining teachers. And that is just unacceptable until we know what that looks like. I don't have confidence it's going to work and that the integrity of the program is going to remain. I want to see, as I think many people here want to see, what does it look like? How is this going to work?
Okay, so I'm gonna try not to get emotional myself. One woman just was speaking, and it got me all teared up. Um, my son, um, is currently at the high school. Um, I'm sorry, Amy Ross, Lower South Hampton, sorry for the record. I wasn't prepared to speak, but, um, these parents and children have moved me, and I wanted to share an experience with my son, who had given up music during COVID. He was not okay with the online lessons. He kind of shrunk back and became, um, less social, and it was actually Mr. Cassidy who reached out to Logan when we went back to school. And, um, I'm so thankful for that, because he has had such amazing experiences in the music program. I mean, amazing. I worry about my son with social anxiety, but the music department is amazing. They welcome every kid. When he didn't make jazz band, he didn't meet it, um, the expectations, and that's understandable. We took lessons afterwards. But it was Mr. Cassidy who reached out to my son and asked if he wanted to know what he could do to improve. When you cut a position, those kinds of extras aren't gonna happen. Kids aren't gonna get reached out by their music teacher, because they're gonna be so stretched thin that these kids will slip through the cracks. So I, I'm gonna end here and just let you know that I just wanted to share that personal experience of mine, and how amazing the music teachers are at this time, and they're not gonna have that same opportunity.
Hi, good evening. Um, Mike Zimmerman, I live in, uh, Middletown. I come at this from a slightly different perspective. Um, I am a Nishamani grad. Um, my two, well, three children are either graduated, also in music degrees, or still currently here. My wife also has a music degree. And I worked here. I was here 15 years ago when we had this exact same conversation. Mr. Bowman, I ended up in Ben Salem, where we worked together. That happened because this board made cuts, where my job wasn't directly cut, but I was going to be moved to a different position and not know where I was going to end up. You are in a position right now where you have a fantastic music staff. You do. I teach in Ben Salem School District, and I know this staff. You are risking not only just spreading these people too thin, but it's a round-robin of who's covering what, and how does that work? And it doesn't work. We've seen in Ben Salem. My concern is, is that you're going to not only risk that, but the potential of losing other good teachers. And that is very real, because if you put somebody in a job that they don't want, or that they aren't, it's not their area of expertise, why would they stay? And again, you're just hurting your own kids. I mean, like, my, this has been super important to me, to my family, to my children, and all these other people that are here. You have kids here that, that are fighting for this. Nobody's saying you're cutting the music program, but everything that has been said tonight is very real and very valid. These people are scared, and we charged you to protect our programs. This program has been strong for a very, very long time. Please keep it that way.
Hi, uh, my name is Pat Mervine. I live in Middletown Township. I could speak to you as a retired educator and tell you all the benefits that music has on students, both socially and academically. I could speak to you as the president of the Langhart Council for the Arts, and tell you that we have given close to 100 scholarships to kids in the past 10 years in music and art. Eighty percent of them are from the music program. Um, and I can tell you that we give those scholarships to kids in 6th to 11th grade, because we know how important it is to support the younger students in their journey, in their exploration of the arts. But I'm going to speak to you as a parent and a grandparent. Um, I am the parent of a student who graduated in 20, uh, 2000, actually, in 2000, it's been that long. Uh, he started at Oliver Heckman and started instrumental lessons with Mr. O'Neil. He was doing very well. Then he moved up to Nishamani Middle School, and that's where he met Donna McGrann. And Donna McGrann changed his life. It's because he had the background in elementary music that he was able to absolutely soar. When he got to the middle school, he continued that in the high school. He's now a professional musician, a composer, arranger, performer, producer. He does it all, and he does it all because of the background he got at Nishamani. Now, he has a son, and his son started in public school, but then COVID hit, and because of all the changes that that occurred, he ended up moving him to a private school, to Newtown Friends. And he was there for three years, so 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. But then my son said, you know, he has music talent too, and he's not getting it in private school. I need to move him. And this year, he was moved to Maple Point. And at Maple Point, my son, my grandson, who is a new student here, fit in immediately because he made the band, he made the jazz band, he made the honors band, and he played in the orchestra. And all of a sudden, instead of being the new kid on the block, he found his family here too. So, the instrumental music program is incredibly important for kids on so many different levels, as you've heard here. Please don't lose this position. Please strengthen the program. You have an amazing program that has changed countless lives. Please don't sacrifice that.
This'll be the last one for the first public comment period.
Hi, my name is Jessie Grip, and I live in Feasterville. I'm 6th grade at Pequesting, and I'm here to beg you to reconsider the, the eliminating of this position. I am the youngest of four kids currently in Nishamani, spread out all over the middle school and the high school. We have been a part of the music program. We are all very different, but we can all, all agree that the music program is the best part of our school day. It is the reason to get us excited about our school day. I know there is, I know we are there to learn math and science, but music is what gives us passion for school. Your children come here tonight to sing their throat dry, play their instruments till, till their lips chap, and the fact that you want to do this is like going against your own community. Give us the time of day. Past teachers are here to produce, to protest this as well. Please reconsider your, your decision.
This'll be the last one for the first public, first public comment period then.
Am I good? Okay, thanks. Hi, I'm Robin Hartman. I am a Levittown resident. My daughter goes to, my daughter Maggie, who's here with us today, she goes to Carl Sandberg Middle School. She's a part of the, uh, musical program. She's a part of the choir, Sound Waves, and, um, the a cappella group that they're a part of. Um, and she thrives in school because of this. Um, I am also a 20-plus-year educator and professional development coordinator, and so I know the tough decisions that you all have to make when you're deciding on technology programs to keep or cut, teachers to keep or cut, things like that. And one of the things that I want to say is that schools should know, I mean, this is research that you can find anywhere. The last thing a good school should do is cut a teacher, or use attrition to get rid of teachers because of budget cuts. We know that the highest-ranking schools in the nation are the least likely to cut a teacher, because we know that programs don't teach students. Teachers teach students. A quality educator is the reason why most of our students are thriving. Larger class sizes make it harder for teachers to give students individual attention. Lower quality of education and teacher burnout is a real thing. We see it every day. We know the statistics, and we know that, uh, colleges are losing education students on the daily, because they fear that they are not going to have jobs, they're going to be cut for an educational technology program, rather than having a quality teacher in the classroom. Students lose out on opportunities that enrich their learning and prepare them for future success. There's widening achievement gaps, vulnerable student populations. When you remove a teacher from a really important valued position, those students are going to struggle. They need those teachers, they need those personal connections. These students often rely more heavily on support, attention, and stability that these teachers provide. Schools are the cornerstone of our community. When our teachers are cut, it affects families, local economy, local economies, and the community morale, as you can see. Job losses also affect the local economy. And if you really want to show that this board cares about what their students and their families and their teachers are saying, it would be a really great idea to look elsewhere when you're using your budget to cut. Teachers are never the first place to start. I know, as a professional development coordinator, that we use a lot of our money developing educational platforms and technology pieces that end up not working and that get phased out very quickly, because they just don't work. But it is a very rare instance that we get rid of a teacher, because the teacher just does not work. So I think it's really important for you to revisit your budget decisions, and please make sure you maintain and sustain this really quality, high music education for Nishamani. Thank you so much.
So that closes the first public comment period. We'll now move into routine matters. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Agenda item number two, routine matters. I would like to place a master motion on the floor for. Two point oh one minutes, two point oh two treasurer's report. Two point oh three check register and procurement card purchases. Two point oh four investments, two point oh five exonerations. Two point oh six bids and two point oh seven budget transfers.
We have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Second by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Personnel certificated. Mrs. Marshall?
I'd like to make a master motion. Section three point oh one retirements, resignations, end of assignments, three point zero two leaves of absence. Three point zero three revised returns from leave. Three point zero four appointments and three point zero five co-curricular appointments.
For motion on the floor, can I get a second? Second by Mrs. Brochus. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Personnel support. Mrs. Brochus?
I'd like to make a master motion, uh, four point zero one retirement, resignations, end of assignments. Four point zero two leaves of absence, four point zero three revised leaves of absence. Four point zero four appointments, four point zero five ancillary appointments. Uh, taking a moment to call out on four point zero one retirements. Um, Collette Faloon with twenty-three point eight years of service. Cheryl Jones with twenty-three point three years of service. And Lena Perry with twenty-eight point six years of service.
A motion on the floor, can I get a second? Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Sit down. Uh, any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'd like to make a master motion for five point zero one annual appointments for the twenty. Thousand twenty-five through twenty thousand twenty-six school year. Five point zero two summer work projects approval. Five point zero three appointment of treasurers. Five point zero four appointment of board secretary and assistant board secretary. Five point zero five facility and, facility and energy usage fees. Five point zero six depositories of school funds. Five point zero seven competitive electronic auction biddings. Five point zero eight cooperative purchasing agreements. Five point one zero newspaper on record. Five point one one procurement card use. Five point one two taxpayers bill of rights. Five point one three contracted services for two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-six. Five point one four, the BCIU special education contracted services twenty-five through twenty-six. Five point one five BCIU safe to say master services agreements for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. Five point one six settlements of Feasterville Plaza Assessment Appeal. Five point one seven employee healthcare premium two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-six. Uh, that's it.
We have a master motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Second by Mrs. Marshall. Any comments or questions?
I just wanted to thank them for their service to the board. They put up with us not returning emails. They're, they're always keeping us hurt and on time and, uh, up to date what's going on. I just wanted to, to, uh, thank them for that.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We have a second right, so any comments or questions other than Mr. Allen's? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Mrs. Hollenbeck?
I'd like to make a motion for five point zero nine breakfast slash lunch pricing. Resolve that the Neshamani School just, School District Board of Directors hereby establishes the following. Twenty twenty-five through twenty-six school year student and adult breakfast and lunch prices. For two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-six reflecting no change from the current school year prices. And the prices are all listed in the motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Rodriguez. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero.
I'd like to make a motion for five point one eight acceptance of donation. Whereas the Neshamani School District has received a donation from giant food stores in the amount of. Eleven thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. To support food security and food assistance initiatives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani Board of School Directors hereby accepts the aforementioned donation.
We have a motion on the floor for the donation. Can I get a second? Second by Mrs. Lafferty. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Educational development, Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'd like to make a master motion for six point zero one student settlement agreements. Six point zero two Head Start pre-K and early learning center programs, MOU at the BCIU. And six point zero three, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six plus flexible instruction day application attachments are filed.
A master motion on the floor. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Allen. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Policy, Mrs. Lafferty?
I'd like to make a motion, seven point zero one first reading of policies, two four seven, two four nine, two five two. Seven zero seven point one, whereas the Board Policy Committee reviewed the policies listed below. At the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five committee meeting. And whereas the board policies listed below are being recommended for policy first reading. Now therefore be it resolved that the Neshamani School Board of Directors reviewed the policies listed below. And recommend a second reading and final adoption at the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five public board meeting. There are four policies.
For motion on the floor, can I get a second? Second by Mr. Wolfbeazer. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Brings us to section eight, the closing of the meeting. Does anyone have any other board business? Okay, if not, that brings us to the second public comment period. The only thing I want to note for the second public comment period is it's limited to a half hour, so first one's, no, I don't think they're gonna talk for a half hour. You're still limited to three minutes, yeah, yeah.
Hi, I'm Allison Marsaglia. I live in Levittown and I am a Neshamani graduate and. My children go to Neshamani also. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on something that Heidi spoke about earlier. She mentioned that when, when it was mentioned that, um, you know, this position could go away. That someone said to her, wouldn't it be nice to have ten less kids in your class? I'm a teacher, so I understand those days when, you know, some kids are absent. It, it does go nicer. But I have a, you know, Heidi took the term of. What if those kids aren't going to go away? So then teachers will be spread. I have a different take on it. Those kids are gonna go away. And what's gonna happen to them when they do? Because they would be there because they have a need for music. And we all know that need doesn't leave you. So children, teenagers, adults. When they don't have a need that is filled, they fill it some other way. Do we really want our kids finding other ways than music to fill that need? We heard counselors speak about how mental health is affected. And I think for a district that stands by mental health and, you know, thinks that it is so important, which it is. They need to, you need to think about that. This isn't just a music decision, it's a mental health decision. My, um, I'm a teacher in a neighboring district. And the whole reason why my family doesn't live in that neighboring distant, district is because of Neshamani's music department. And I think that you just need to really think about this, not just as music, but as mental health, because it is. Thank you. And thank you for being here. I know it's not a music spot.
I'm back. Gary Kraus from Langhorne. I was gonna get up here and read you the, uh, itemized list of accomplishments from the, uh, music program. I think we've all gotten that point, so I wanted to go a little personal. Three kids in the district. One graduated last year. Suffers from Tourette's. The music program and the drama program were the best therapy he's ever had. He worked through it. You don't notice his tics. He was the Jimmy nominee and award winner last year who performed on Broadway. He's, um, he's a writer for Musical Theater and Music. He's, he's playing a gig at Studio Fifty-four in New York City in two weeks. And we couldn't be more proud. And the music staff here is the reason why. My second child, he couldn't, he couldn't let his mother go out and get the mail. Without losing his mind with anxiety about abandonment. He's really into tech and computers. We thought he was gonna live in our basement the rest of his life. He met kids, I think they, most of them are gone now, in the, uh, Neshamani Choir. They embraced him. And I'll be damned, he's singing in the low voice choir. He sounds like Barry White. We don't know where it came from. But again, without the people in that program. Mr. O'Neil, whose father and mother were both teachers, got him into choir. And, um, he just wanted to try it. Now next year, he's doing drama and choir in the high school. I have a daughter who's in Maple Point, who has been in every musical performance. Um, she idolizes her oldest brother and tries her hardest and is vocally magnificent. And she has put together a friend group across multiple schools. I mean, this young lady here that we were talking about, Maggie Hartman. She won the, uh, best soloist at Akatama Gym a few weeks ago through like five or six different schools. So they've developed friends that would walk into traffic for them if they needed to. They just, the bonds are so strong. And we've seen the difference in our children, their attitudes. Um, they want to come to school. I didn't want to come to school. I don't even want to drive them to school. But they want to be here every day. They come early, they stay late. Thankfully, their older brother can drive them now. All the teachers, elementary level, I heard somebody mention Helen Kirsch. And, um, Ms. Agger, who's no longer Ms. Agger. Um, there's just so many to name. And. I, I envisioned having three kids that would play for the Philadelphia Eagles when I had kids. I was a sports dad, sports programs all the way. I thought all you music people were. And then my kids were like, we don't do sports. And I saw the love in their eyes and the light. With what they were able to do with music. I couldn't care less if I see another football game in my life. Because to see them perform on those stages with these friends for life and those teachers that brought them there. Is the greatest feeling ever. So. Back to the math side of things, you have ten teachers, you have work split ten ways, you're gonna get rid of one person. That's ten jobs split nine ways. Implying that the people that are staying were already working at capacity, which I think all the teachers are. They can't absorb that. They're gonna burn out, they're gonna want to leave, they're gonna have mental breakdowns. It's just, it, it doesn't work. And I'm also a federal government employee who, we've recently lost twenty percent of our manpower. Because they just wanted to cut, 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 fix the deficit, cut, cut, cut. We can't support half the systems on Navy ships anymore. Because all of that knowledge is gone. And due to attrition, they're not bringing anybody in. And that's national defense. It's just, it's proven that this formula does not work. And, um, I just again ask that you don't move forward with not filling that position. Look into the budgetary reserve that I saw on the budget. Plenty of money there for one more teacher. And then do what you need to do with these fifteen retirements coming up. To find other alternatives, cut some other things, cut some things that, you know, people can live without. I know computers and technology are great, but I'd rather have more teachers and some more textbooks. Than no teachers and fancy Chromebooks. So, um, just please do the right thing.
Hi, my name is Lexi Heran. I, uh, I live in Feasterville and I go to, I'm a seventh grader in Bequesting Middle School. Um, I play many different instruments and I sing in the choirs, but I also wrestle. So I'm into sports. I've made many friends with sports, but I have made just as many friends in the music program. I've made, if anything, more friends in the music program. And better friends in the music program than I could ever ask for in the wrestling program. I understand that. Never mind. I trust, I trust all of my music teachers with a lot of things that I wouldn't trust a coach with ever. I trust a lot of my music teachers with things that I would never put out. I have trusted them to decide what's best for me. I've trusted them to help me get better at. Me, um, my instruments and my choirs and my singing and my personality. I just ask, please reconsider. And please don't cut us really thin.
Hey, last time I didn't give you my name where I live, I apologize for that. I am Cara Mae the Malik. I live in Langhorne. I feel like the last time I spoke, I didn't make it clear how important the elementary piece is in music. If you want to have high school choirs that astound people. If you want to have Neshamani graduates on Bro, on Broadway, graduates on Broadway. It starts in the elementary. And we all know sometimes those first few weeks of your kids' lessons aren't the most beautiful. But that's where it starts. And yes, I, I am a former elementary teacher. I do love young ones. But especially for them, think about how enriched their lives could be. Also, I've had the unfortunate experience in my life as an elementary teacher. To have kids who had home lives that were horrendous. I will not say the details, but any of you who've been in education have been privy to those things. And those were the kids, and I guess I'm biased, that I say, get involved in music, get involved in music. Because there is a family feeling to it. And for many of the kids who I later saw in high school, it really was their saving grace. It really truly was. So it's particularly for me unconscionable to take away an elementary position. Because that's where it starts. That's where it starts. And again, I haven't crunched numbers. I don't have, I have plenty of statistics to show you about how. Music enhances learning. But at the end of the day, music can save kids' lives. And I, I have been privy to that. And I have known instances where that was the God's honest truth. So I, I felt badly that I didn't make that clear the last time and I appreciate you letting me circle back. And if any of you want to touch base with me and hear some more about these stories. And again, you don't have to care about the things I know about. You don't. But I sure hope you would. And, um, And, um, thank you again.
Hello, I am Parker DeCesare, and I'm from Feasterville, Trevo. Alright, so, last time I was here, I spoke, I got unsure answers. You kinda just deflected it, which I did not like. So, I want actual solid answers this time. And I just wanna say, I don't have stats or anything for you. I just wanna share my personal experience. So, I was in the musical. I'm, I'm involved in everything except for jazz band at my middle school. But they really, they really do help me. They really make my life better. They improve my mental health, they improve my grades, they improve everything about me. And I just really love all my teachers. We even have Ms. Lewis here. She's amazing. We also have Mr. T. He's also very amazing. They're awesome, they're awesome, I'm telling you. And when you remove one of them, it's not good for me or any other people in the music program. And I just wanna say, please, just hire another person. I know you have money. You have like, what, five million in reserve or something? Yeah, I heard, I heard last board meeting. Please use it, it's only like fifty thousand dollars. It's all I ask. Thank you.
Um, hi, I'm Sarah Harvey. I'm resident in Feasterville, Trevo. I'm an eighth grade student at Bequesting Middle School, part of the concert choir, select choir, string orchestra, concert band, and jazz band. I have been a part of music since fourth grade, joining more on, with ensembles in the middle school. And with that, people have said how music has helped a lot of our mental health, our issues in life, how our home lives could not be, are not as great, struggle with, um, depression, any, like disability, stuff like that. Cause of these directors providing a safe space. From my own perspective of being in a depressive state, thinking that I shouldn't be here, I have been able to learn more from them, be able to benefit my mental health, be more positive, happier, cause of them providing more of a safe space. And not only for music, but just being more like a friend as well, and being like a second family. Mr. Cassidy back there, hi, is like an older brother to me. I don't have older siblings, so I have adoptive older siblings basically. But I don't have older siblings and I have, so I haven't had, besides my parents, anyone that I can go to to talk about things that I wouldn't like, want, like, hey, don't tell mom this, don't tell dad that. So, they have been the people that I've been able to talk about with things that I don't want mom knowing sometimes. Like, can't think of much, but yeah. And with Mr. Cassidy, he, when I was thinking about quitting the music program for all a couple months ago, because I didn't make one ensemble, so I thought, well, if I didn't make this, I probably am not good enough, I should not continue with this. He sat me down, talked to me about how this would not be the best decision, cause of the friends I have made. One right there, one right there, they're all around this room with the friends I've made, how I have had better bonds with people with this music program. Cutting a director is not the best choice, because I would want kids younger than me to experience what I have been able to experience through their four years of middle school, even starting in elementary school in third grade with the orchestra program. Fourth grade choir and band, adding on more as they get to the high school. Cutting a director is not the best option, cause they could lose much of the experience that multiple thousands, ten thousands, hundreds have experienced, like me, with this program. It's not best. And as Parker said, you guys have the money. Hire a teacher, pay them the salary of fifty thousand dollars. It's that simple.
Hi, my name is Bella Carriola. I live in Feasterville, Trevo. First, I wanna thank you all for your time here today. As we graduate from Bequesting Middle School, it's sad hearing that you would want to take a teacher from Sandberg, Maple Point, or Bequesting Middle School. You're taking the education away from the students that thrive by having music. The staff has such an amazing impact and influence on their students. In Bequesting Middle School, I was in select choir and auditioned for the musicals. Mr. Cassidy, Mr. Mrs. Lewis, Mr. Barber, Mrs. Flick, and most of all, Mr. Lee. They have all helped me to be who I am today. This music program also gave me a second family. So, please rethink your decision about cutting a music position. We're human beings that matter. Thank you for your time.
Hi, so I'm Harvey, seventh grade. I didn't have the drum lesson in fourth grade, but with encouragement from Mr. Cassidy, I passed it with a cast. But if you guys get rid of a music director, which is five thousand dollars, which I think you shouldn't do, none, none of my friends will pass their drum lesson. So, please, we, we consider not firing a music director. Thank you.
How y'all doing tonight? My name's Tom Hran. Lexi's down here up front, who you spoke with earlier. I'm gonna leave you with a couple questions. I think we all know how important the, the band program is in the Nishamney. Um, it's been explained through multiple speakers here. But I don't, I don't think you guys understand or have witnessed how important that band program is to some of these kids. Um, I don't know if many of yous have sat through these concerts or sat through these, um, Akatama Jams with some of these kids up there enjoying themselves and finding their space. Um, I see some of you shaking your heads, but if you did, you wouldn't be making the cut. Cause you would see how important it is. Um, you have an obligation. When you come in this building, you see, I think it's We Build Futures. There's no future here without music. And that's with all ten teachers supporting the staff of these kids. Not the nine, not nothing else. It's the ten teachers supporting this group. Cause the group just continues to get larger. You sit in that showcase, the Nishamney Showcase, where they put on their super, super orchestra. And you see these, these directors try to get these kids up there. I don't know, how many is it? Can somebody call me? Two? Two hundred kids up there, multiple rows trying to organize that group. It's on your TV in the front, front lobby when you see it. I mean, one less teacher to do all that. It doesn't work. The math don't math. I don't know if we got any math teachers, but it don't math. So, it, it just doesn't, it doesn't add up. Um, I encourage all of yous to take in a concert next year and see how hard these directors work. See how happy these kids are. Um, Lexi attends every, stop that, don't do that. Um, she attends every extracurricular festival there is there, from String Day to everything else. And she also wrestles, yeah. I, it's, the program's important to the kids, but I think the more important thing is for each and every one of yous to understand how important it is to the kids. And take in what it means to them. Cause hearing from a select few that are up here tonight doesn't account to the hundreds that won't come up here and speak or don't have the time. You sit through one of these concerts, through one of the seasons, one musical, and you see how fun they are. I bump into these directors, just about every show we attend, we, we attend just about all of them. And, and, and the music in the parks and everything else we can support. Um, you wouldn't be cutting if you attended some of these things.
There you go. Hi, good evening. Uh, my name's Cameron Kraus. I'm a proud graduate of Albert Schweitzer Elementary, Maple Point Middle School, and Nishamney High School. And I'm here because the district's music program didn't just shape my education, it shaped my entire life. Um, at Schweitzer, I discovered my voice as a person. At Maple Point, I found a team. At Nishamney, I found my purpose. A lot of that is actually due to Kristen Nichols or Cloak, um, the high school music teacher. Cause she didn't just teach music, she built a community rooted in discipline, humility, creativity, and love, as do all of our other music teachers. Um, because of this music department, I got to perform on Broadway at eighteen years old. That's crazy. That is absolutely insane. And even if I hadn't, the impact would still be the same regardless, because the lessons I learned went far beyond the stage. Our program isn't just meaningful, it's successful. Not just talking about Nishamney High School, but since we're on the topic, Nishamney High School's choir has won the B101 Christmas Choir Competition twice. Uh, bringing regional pride to our school, we sent students to the PMEA District, regional, and all-state festivals, where for most years, we have at least one student in every single category. Which is fantastic. These aren't just accolades, they're proof of what happens when students are supported, challenged, and inspired. Cutting this position doesn't just remove a teacher, it removes a lifeline. Music is often the reason students come to school. It's where they find their voice, their confidence, their community. It's where they're seen. Music isn't extra. It's essential. It's taught, it teaches people how to lead, how to care, responsibility, and how to show up in the world. Please don't take this opportunity away from the next kid who needs it. Thank you for listening and for fighting for the heart of our school. Good evening. Board members, administration, community members, students. Thank you for everything that you've done this evening. Thank you for listening, thank you for speaking, thank you for performing. We've heard a lot of emotional pleas this evening. We've heard from students and parents alike. I wanna just share some numbers with you. There are roughly ten thousand students in this school district. By the way, my name's Pat Cassidy, I apologize, I'm a teacher in Nishamney. Uh, I'm Langhorne, born and bred, I believe, red and blue, class of 2012. So, this fight is more than just about numbers for me. But the numbers matter. Ten thousand students, twenty-seven music teachers. That's a ratio of one to three seventy. If we get cut, we're down to twenty-six. Ten of those teachers are itinerant, meaning they travel from elementary and their middle schools to teach instrumental music. The proposal is to go from ten to nine, to cover those thousands of students between nine people. We were told in a meeting, this is because of declining numbers. And I'm here to tell you, as you see through the data, that this is not true. Over the last thirty years, the numbers have gone up in both band and orchestra, district-wide, at the elementary and middle school level, to the two hundred and ten percent growth in band and thirty-seven percent growth in orchestra. I ask you how these numbers justify a cut to what makes Nishamney special. We have four orchestra teachers in the itinerant department, and we have six band teachers. Mr. Zimmerman spoke eloquently earlier about how he once found himself as a old man on the totem pole at Maple Point. And his job, his position was cut. Mr. Zimmerman was one of my first inspirations in jazz. I was in his jazz band. He sparked something unique that I wanted to continue to get to kids when I became a teacher. And I became a jazz band director when I was twenty-one. I don't know where I'd be without Mr. Zimmerman and so many other Nishamney teachers. Alan Murray Man, the totem pole, so to speak, is also one of our most fabulous teachers. She's a first-year teacher named Stephanie Lou, and she has two hundred and fifty-five orchestra students at two elementary schools. They won't tell us who's being cut, but contractually, we know that it would be Stephanie's position. Two hundred and fifty-five kids, how do we cover that? We cover that? Number six band guys? There's only four orchestra teachers, we go down to three. Those six band guys are gonna be struggling to cover something out of their specialty. We would be de-specializing our music teachers if we move forward with this. We have to talk about BCME, the nine years in a row, best communities music education. Having specialized music teachers is part of what makes us special. And we are going to lose that if we go forward with this. Things like honors festivals, teachers can afford to do because they have a little bit of energy left at the end of the day. Who's to say that those things can continue? We are humbly asking for a temporary stay to this decision. We consider this with the next retirement within the department. But in the meantime, watch our numbers grow and grow and grow. Thank you.
That's the end to the second public comment period, we're at the half hour. So, that brings us to board comment section. Anybody have any comment?
Firstly, I wanna thank all the students and staff that came out tonight, but wanted to highlight a couple of the students that came in here tonight and spoke. And if I get your name wrong, I do apologize. Uh, Jesse Grip, Gianna Garcia, Bella Carriola, Sonny Harvey, Sarah Harvey, Parker DeCesare, and Lexi Haran. I believe that is all the students that came in here and spoke. And I thank you, I really do. Um, the list of everyone else that spoke, I'm sorry, can't see, can't go through that list. But I do appreciate you coming out. Um, and you are heard. Um, you're heard by many of us. Um, and I asked the board, and we've talked previously, I asked the board to also consider what was said here tonight, consider what has been said over the last few weeks. Um, a couple key words, I took a lot of notes. Um, a couple key words, the confidence, behavioral studies, mental health, um, the passion and integrity. Just, the list goes on and on, the community outreach, the leadership that it promotes. Um, I mean, you can see just with Cameron being here tonight. I do remember that last year, and congratulations on that. Um, and I just think there's a lot here said tonight. And I think as most of us kinda know where you're, where you are, but maybe a word or a line that was said here by one of the parents or one of the students may, uh, change your mind a- as you move forward. And, uh, then we have this vote in the coming weeks, so. Again, thank you all. Teachers, um, that's here tonight and that are not here. I can't thank you enough. Um, I do have a child in the music program. And, uh, someone said it earlier that, uh, when they first start out, you're yours kinda screech. It's so true, so true. But it turned out to be wonderful. I mean, my daughter's been playing in the jazz band for the last couple of years and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Cassidy gave her that, um, positive and that leadership and that, uh, confidence that made her grow. So, that's all I have to say tonight, and I just ask that we all just take another look.
I concur with Carlos on a lot that he had to say. I mean, twenty-six speakers tonight, many of which were children, which is outstanding. I can't imagine, I don't like pe- speaking publicly, so standing up, um, on something like that is, is huge. Um, I too am part of the music community here, um, so I do understand the value. I myself am a graduate and was a choir kid, so I understand where a lot of this passion comes from, the mental health, the sense of community, um, and building. So, you know, as we continue to look through this and, and finalize budget and decisions are made, I'm, I'm still leaning toward hoping to see where this shakes out and, you know, similar to what everybody else wants as far as, you know, transparency and information as well. So, thank you all for continuing to, to be here and showing up.
Thank you. Um, I wanna thank everyone who came out to speak tonight. Um, I, I think I gave my view the last time we discussed this about how much music has meant to me growing up. Um, as I said, I can't carry a note, I can't play a tune, but I can tell you, you know, the big band eras, the drummers from back from, uh, through my parents' album collection and, and all the Irish tenors from my great-grandfather's collection, and all the rock bands. Music is huge in, in my family. It's, and, and I know how proud I am every time we hear, uh, accomplishments from our music department. And so, and I just wanna say, you have been heard, and I thank you all for coming out. Um, but I did wanna, uh, just, uh, just as a side, one thing that stuck out to me, Mr. Cassidy. But I did wanna, just as a side, one thing that stuck out to me, Mr. Kraus, I think, made a comment about our facility issues, the drama department, the auditorium, and all. And I just wanted to say, as part of the chair of the Facility Committee, they, we are aware, they're on our radar, and it will be addressed. That's really jumped out at me, said I better talk about that. And again, thank you all for coming out, and especially the children who came. That's huge. You know, I'm pushing sixty, and it's hard to speak in public.
All right, if there's nothing else, make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second, Mrs. Hollenbeck, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.